Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Would you like to stand and speak in flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll hand that out if I were you.
Yes. Can you have a copy?
Yep.
Okay. First proclamation for tick awareness month.
Whereas Master Gardeners of Ocean County Incorporated was formed in 1990 and is a nonprofit organization, working in cooperation with the Ocean County Board of Preholders and Rutgers, New Jersey Agricultural Experiment Station to promote the mission of the Rutgers Master Gardener Volunteer Program by utilizing research-based information to educate the public throughout Ocean County on best practices in consumer horticulture and environmental stewardship. Whereas the Master Gardeners of Ocean County Incorporated, under the direction of the Rutgers Master Gardener Program, provides services for tick identification and has tracked the tick population in Ocean County since 2010. Whereas over the past five years, Master Gardeners of Ocean County Incorporated has tracked an increase in the tick population. And whereas while Lyme disease cases are reported on in the Ocean County and New Jersey area, the U.S. Department of Human Services Center for Disease Control and Prevention has updated its pamphlet, Tick-Horned Diseases of the United States: A Reference Manual for Healthcare Providers to include additional less-known diseases that impact the health of our citizens. Whereas these additional diseases include anaplasmosis, which is most frequently reported in areas that correspond with the known geographic distribution of Lyme disease; phaeosis, which is most frequently reported from the northern and upper midwestern United States; or lichiosis, most frequently reported from the southeastern and south-central United States, from the eastern seaboard extending westward to Texas. Rocky Mountain spotted fever cases have been reported throughout most of the contiguous U.S. Hawassan virus infections have been reported primarily from northeastern states and the Great Lakes region. Whereas the Master Gardeners of Ocean County Incorporated are committed to provide tick identification and preventive information, as well as promote the awareness of diseases set forth by the Center for Diseases and Prevention to the citizens of Ocean County. Now therefore, I, Nicholas Giuliano, Mayor of the Township of Lacey, on behalf of myself and the governing body, do hereby proclaim June of 2018 as Tick Awareness Month and further express sincere appreciation for the commitment and dedication demonstrated by these volunteer citizens of Ocean County. We have Ms. Roberta Quinn here this evening, who's a resident of Lacey plus a New Jersey Master Gardener.
Yes, and I also have with me here tonight Patty Kennedy, also a resident. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and committee members. My name is Roberta Quinn. I have been a Lacey Township resident for 34 years and am a member of the Ocean County Master Gardeners. Patty Kennedy, also Lacey resident, has been 40 years in Lacey. Thank you for allowing me to say two words about one of the volunteer services provided by the Master Gardeners. Our organization identified ticks for 1,674 residents throughout Ocean County in 2017. Each resident was educated on the type of tick identified, deer, dhole, or longstark, and potential diseases each type of tick can transmit. Last year, 3,693 ticks were identified in our tick lab. This year, our volunteers have conducted seminars throughout Ocean County to educate the residents on how to deal with the increased tick population. Pre-tick identification is available the entire year at the Rutgers Clubbers' Extension of Ocean County at 1623 Whitesville Road in Tom's River. We encourage residents to bring in any tick they come across to be identified. This helps the county keep track of the growing tick population and the diseases they carry. The Ocean County Board of Preholders support allows us to provide this important service to our residents. We thank the Lacey Township Committee for recognizing the need for ticks and tick awareness in Lacey County. Good afternoon. Thank you.
For the year.
Very important.
Yes.
Now, has any of that new ticks that's out that they put on the news, like around this area, that we know besides being in North Jersey?
It's in New Jersey.
Yeah, that's like the northwest of New Jersey, right?
Trying to contain it.
Being someone that doesn't live in, you know, woods, I don't know a lot about ticks, but is this the high season now that we're getting into, or?
Main due for the deer tick.
Okay.
But that tick's 12 months out in the year.
Wow.
Anytime the temperature is over 40 degrees, you can have a tick.
So the best thing when you find them is to get the little cup and then bring them up to the county?
Yes, bring them up to Whitesville Road, identify the type of tick it is, give you the information you need to know for your health, and if the tick is a orange or not.
Okay. I want to thank you for coming because I know not a lot about it and certainly getting it out and making more people aware. Something that can lead to a lot of health issues. You're doing a great job doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
My daughter's been covered with them the past two, three weeks.
You can get a pill from your vet and it really does help.
I'm on top of that now.
Okay. And it does help, it does really prevent it.
I went to my work in tick lab yesterday morning and we had, in three hours, we had almost 35 ticks.
Oh, really? Do they know how it affects animals, the ticks?
How it affects, I, with the Asian tick, the new tick that you were talking about, does have, they have an effect on sheep, other deer, and cats and many. So, but they're still running tests.
They're still running tests.
They know about the deer tick and the longstarks and how they affect animals. You can, you know, like you go up and you go, you know, for some reason you're going.
Cats.
Right, and you have to take them as a tick.
Steven, how many ticks?
Four to five.
Steve's just gonna give you the dog.
Bring them up to Whitesville.
Yeah, I'm gonna get a pet tick.
Thank you very much for the information.
Okay. Number two, special use permit, Forkett River Presbyterian Church Car Show, June 30th, and posting signs of approval.
Okay, as we all know, the Forkett River Presbyterian Church is very charitable and they do a lot of events to help offset some of their costs. They're looking to have their annual car show on June 30th from 9:30 to 2:00 at their site. In addition to that, they're looking to place informational signs throughout the community a week in advance of the event. This has been reviewed and approved by Loretta. Motion to approve, if you wish to do so.
Move it off, few minutes. Second.
Call in favor?
Aye. Request to post banner on Warden House.
Okay, you each had gotten a letter from the BFW Post 10118 Auxiliary, which is located here in Forkett River. They, of course, are looking to help make recognition to the fact that out of all the active-duty veterans, that 22 active-duty veterans commit suicide every single day. So they're trying to bring public awareness to this and they would like to hang a banner on the north side of the Warden House where our VetWorks building is located. They will be supplying the banner, ordering the banner, paying for the banner, and they just would like it to be put up. I think they're gonna put it up as well on the township building, which is the Warden House.
On the north side or the south side?
It's, I think they said.
No, the north side of the building.
Oh, the north side, the south side they want, yeah, the south side of the building, sorry.
Move it. Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
And then just one other thing, I know I sent you, sent you all a message with regards to that. Just as a reminder that, and I know we have another meeting before then, June 3rd is the Rotary Club's annual Doggie Derby. Of course, you know, they always like the committee to be involved. I know the mayor has committed, I believe, Tim, you're out of town then.
Yeah, I am.
But, you know, just a reminder, Jones Road Field, you know, Doggie Derby.
At what time is it?
Starts at 11 o'clock if I'm not mistaken. You know, you could be a judge for the best kissing dog and all that stuff if you guys want to do that.
Do you host ticks?
That too, that too. That too.
If anybody hasn't, if I may, may I? Sure. If any of the residents that are watching have not been to that, it's one of the great family-friendly events that we have and I certainly encourage you to go. Bring your dog. It's a lot of fun and there's great food and there's our great people, our neighbors in town. So I hope to see everyone there and certainly to town. Thank you. Thank you.
And then, so we, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we can go right into the township meeting if you'd like.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act pursuant to public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Would you like to have a salute to the flag and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm ready when you're ready.
First reading of ordinance 2018-15, amending Chapter 323, Vehicles and Traffic, so as to establish stop intersections.
In accordance with Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 323 of the Township Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic so as to amend Section 323-28 entitled Schedule 5, Stop and Yield Intersections, so as to provide for additional stop and yield intersections in the Township of Lacey. There's three that we're creating here. One would be when you go down Hollywood Boulevard and you would either go left or right to go Hollywood Boulevard South or Hollywood Boulevard North, there will be a stop sign at Hollywood Boulevard as it intersects with Hollywood Boulevard South. The next would be a stop sign on Calvin Street. As you go to Calvin Street here, you approach north, and then a stop sign on Calvin Street as you intersect with Trenton Avenue North. Motion?
Second.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance 2018-13, amending Chapter 323, Vehicles and Traffic, so as to amend Section 323-39.
In accordance with Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 323 of the Township Code of Township of Lacey entitled Vehicles and Traffic so as to amend Section 323-39F entitled Control for the Movement and Parking of Traffic on Public and Private Property. This is just to, a couple months back, we renamed, I'm gonna say the Gilly Park Access Road to R. Kennedy Boulevard. So that is just formally addressing those name changes in the code book under that section that applies to the private roadways here on the municipal complex.
Would you like to open it up to the public, second reading?
Seeing the motion to close the floor.
Second.
Home.
Yep.
Home in favor?
Aye.
Motion.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance 2018-14, authorizing the financing of the 2018 capital improvements, equipment, and projects.
In accordance with Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, providing for various capital improvements and the acquisition of various capital equipment appropriating $1,910,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $1,423,100 in bonds and notes of the township to finance the same.
Is this second reading?
Yeah, this is our 2018 capital improvement list. These are the items that we need to go out to bond for that we've committed during the budget process. Fire truck for the Lenoka Harbor Fire Company, a first responder vehicle for the Lacey EMS, three SUV vehicles for public safety patrol vehicles and the radio equipment to go with it, purchase of a dump truck for Public Works with a tailgate spreader and snowplow, infrastructure milling and paving of Lakeside Drive East, $200,000 of that is also grant funds, replacement of the south end, the south dock, street end bulkhead, engineering for the railroad avenue extension, acquisition of easements for the Lake Varnigut Drive and Haynes future traffic light, the dam safety inspections for the three high-hazard dams, engineering and permitting of the south dock, the remainder of the bulkhead replacement, replacement of the municipal building generator, the generator we received through government surplus, this is just the engineering and any equipment that needs to be mechanically, that needs to be done, acquisition of a vehicle for administration and two vehicles for the assessor. Those are the items we're bonding this year. Second reading?
Second reading, I'd like to open it up to the public.
Seeing the public, the motion to close it.
I just have one question, it's one vehicle for the assessor and one pool vehicle.
Two, yes, yes, correct. One vehicle for the assessor, one pool vehicle, and one administration vehicle, correct. Sorry about that.
Is the motion closed before?
Second.
Call in favor?
All in favor. Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-136, appointing a Class 1 Special Law Enforcement Officer.
Resolution Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, appointing Jennifer Lacondro as a Class 1 Special Law Enforcement Officer.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-137, authorizing the refund of a homestead rebate for a disabled veteran.
Resolution Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to refund the homestead rebate for a disabled veteran on Block 1631.08, Lot 20.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes.
Resolution 2017-138, authorizing the cancellation of taxes due to a disabled veteran exemption.
Resolution Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel 2018 taxes due on a property granted the 100% disabled veteran exemption and refund the resulting credit balance. And this is on Block 1533, Lot 4.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Resolution 2018-139, authorizing the release of a performance guarantee for Bayside Beach Dredging Project.
Resolution Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the release of a performance guarantee for the Bayside Beach Dredging Project. This has been recommended by the special project engineer. There is no need for our maintenance bond on this project.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-140, authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-141, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $11,354,051.2. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Your extensions, please.
Oh, yes, my extension is on vendor D0400.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes, with noted extensions D0400 and T0035.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes.
Monthly reports.
Okay, for the month of April, Municipal Clerk's Office collected receipts in the amount of $6,236.24. For the month of March, the Municipal Doc's collected receipts in the amount of $47,300. And those are the only reports, motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of April 26, 2018.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes of April 26, 2018.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve membership in the Bamber Lakes Fire Company Ladies Auxiliary for Kathleen Hess, Diane Hess, Stacy Nielsen, Lindsay McKee, Jessica Nappi, and Jenny Wainwright.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I do have one add-on this evening, it's the first reading of an ordinance. It's gonna be ordinance 2018-16. This is in line with recommendations for our Town Center application. This is, the DDP is authorizing us to move forward with this. In accordance with Township of Lacey, County of Ocean, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing the Township Code of the Township of Lacey to create Chapter 279 entitled Repairian Zone. And what this ordinance, the purpose of this ordinance is to ensure that owners or developers of land within the township are aware of the repairian zone requirements of the Flood Hazard Area Control Act rules. And in accordance with the requirements of New Jersey Administrative Code, no person shall engage in a regulated activity in a regulated area of a regulated water without a flood hazard area authorization permit as required by the New Jersey Administrative Code. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano?
Yes.
That's all I got to add on this evening.
Comments from the committee? Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things here. All the parks are open and the kids are out there playing and they're running around and somewhere on their bikes and so I'm just gonna ask the people to be very, very careful when you're moving through these parks. Talk a little bit about Gilly Park. Yes, we know about these trucks that are parking there. It's because the pipeline for the new MUA building hasn't gone through yet. We are applying as much pressure as possible to the contractor to get it done so we can get this truck out of there by June. Hopefully, hopefully that's going to happen. July 14th, if you might, I'm gonna mark this down. We're going to have the first annual Police versus the Firemen softball game in Puffy Wallace. It's gonna be a fundraiser. That's gonna be the grand opening, the new grand opening of Puffy Wallace Park, Puffy Wallace Park. So more about that later. Well, Jim's coming, next month, next meeting?
That's what you're telling me.
I think that's, yeah, I think Jim's coming next meeting and he'll have more on that. And one other thing is, the one thing we are creating is, it's called Thursday Under the Pavilion. Every Thursday night under the Pavilion, every other Thursday night will be an open-mic night. And then the opposite, the alternating nights will be where you have some classical music, some jazz or something like that under the Pavilion here at Gilly Park. One last thing I do want to talk about, and this kind of hit home this week, is senior crimes. A lot of it's going on. Seniors are getting scammed out of money. And I can tell you this, that to the seniors, if you have any doubts whatsoever, please, please, reach out to somebody, call the police, find out if what they're telling, if somebody's on the phone telling you is true or not true. Get your children involved, do whatever you can because this person lost in excess of $50,000. Hopefully, we'll be able to get some of that back, but we'll see about that. So I'm just telling people, it just seems to be very prevalent now this time of the year. People are relaxing, these guys are very, 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 very good at what they do. So just, just be careful. If you have any questions, seniors, get your kids involved, reach out to the police, reach out to somebody and say, is this the right thing? And if they call you and say you won a contest, ask them when you entered the contest. Now if they tell you you gotta give them some money to get the prize, hang up the phone because it's not true. I think that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Can we give him a win?
Thanks, Mayor. I just have two brief comments. One is from the chief of police. The chief asked me to just read this. We have our ongoing cop card program going on again this year and we're still, it's still going on for another couple of weeks. But he wants people to be aware that the Police Township Police Department Cop Card Program will be continuing for another few weeks. The program involves baseball-style trading cards depicting members of the police department. There is a card for each police officer as well as 21 specialty cards totaling 64 cards. The program allows the youth in our community the opportunity to collect all the cards and upon collecting a complete set, they become eligible to win prizes. The program is designed to provide an opportunity for the youth in our community and the police officers to interact and promote a positive and trusting relationship for years to come. 2018 Cop Card Meet the Officers Day is scheduled for Saturday, June 2nd, 2018, and will be held at the Lacey Township Middle School from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Meet the Officers Day will allow our residents, including our youth, to meet the police officers of Lacey Township. Additionally, the youths will have the opportunity to have their cop collectible cards signed by each police officer. All the cop collectible cards will be available that day. The event will also offer refreshments, entertainment, and prizes. The prizes will include, but not limited to, bicycles and iPads. Anyone has any questions regarding the event, please contact Lieutenant Cornelius at 693-6636, extension 2566. This is a program, we did it last year, we've done it a number of years in the past, but it really is a great program that gives the children in the community the opportunity to interact and meet the officers one-on-one. We're trying to get the officers to build relationships with the youth so that as they get older, they, you know, have a little bit more contact with the police officers as opposed to, you know, having a relationship where they're nervous to speak to them or have any kind of fear of a police officer. So if you can get out there on June 2nd, come on out, meet the officers and you'll let your kids participate because they'll definitely have a lot of fun. The only other comment I have, I don't know if anyone else can bring it up, but we're a couple of weeks away from Memorial Day. We'll be having a Memorial Day Parade here in town. Our next meeting is the 24th, which is kind of cutting it close to put the word out there for people to come out and enjoy the parade. It's a great day, it's an ability to honor, you know, the vets in this country that are still here and the ones that we've lost through different conflicts throughout the world. So come out, you know, sit along the parade route, come out to Town Hall and, you know, enjoy the ceremony because the vets put on a great ceremony over here in the park every year. So that's all I have, Mayor, thank you very much.
May I mean Kenneth?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna use my allotted time to discuss Infinity War spoilers. No. No, we continue, we continue to apply pressure to.
What is that?
We recently sent a. He doesn't know any Infinity Wars.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Oh, my gosh.
You have a young kid, that's gotta be.
That's the biggest grossing movie in the history of movies. The Marvel Avengers movie?
I've been watching Mickey's Clubhouse for two years.
This one just came out like a week or so ago, so you're saying.
How old is this committee I'm working with? Mr. Kenneth? Anyway. Exactly. Do you not know what it is? We have, we continue to apply pressure to the power plan. We recently sent a letter to the CEO of Exelon and other members of Exelon management team to just keep reminding them and apply pressure to them that to not forget about, forget about us as they get closer to their decommissioning plan coming to fruition. And also, tonight we adopted a repairian ordinance that was recommended by the DEP. Last week, we met with the DEP and we'll continue to do so to also continue to try and apply pressure and just sort of do what they ask us to do in order to further our Town Center application. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
It was Infinity Wars. I'm still, it's like not knowing what Star Wars is.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I say too, okay.
I have no idea what the heck you're talking about. I'm gonna have to tell you something.
I think I'm joining the rest of them because I don't know what it is. I think I'm joining the rest of them because I don't know what it is either.
There's definitely, there's definitely an age barrier here on this one.
Mr. Curatolo probably understands.
No, he doesn't know.
No, I'm afraid I don't, and I will not have an opening as good as the committee and Stephen Kenneth's.
That opening went flat to this crowd though.
Yeah, you bobbed. You definitely bobbed. Stick with your day job.
That's the target one he got.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. I'd like to dovetail on one of the things Committeeman Quinn said, and another Committeeman, excuse me, Deputy Mayor McDonald said. The Memorial Day Parade is a special celebration in our town. As ladies on the Veterans Commission, I'd like to ask the town that always supports our veterans to continue to support them, thank them, and more importantly, hire them when and if you have an opportunity. The parade will start at 10:00 a.m. at the Lacy United Methodist Church, and it'll end up here in a very somber ceremony in Bicentennial Park right out in the front of this building. Of course, all are invited for that. And again, we just can't stress the importance for the veterans that sacrificed. Everything, the Gold Star Moms, the active-duty soldiers, sailors, airmen, marines, and coast stars, we're gonna be thanking. I would like to thank the police department publicly for two things. One was their speedy response to an accident that took place at the Patchburg TJ Maxx Plaza this past Sunday. Had this, the entire scene courted off, I happened to be doing some grocery shopping early that morning, and I observed from distance, the entire scene being secured, proper authorities being notified, followed up by our building department that went out there promptly, inspected the building, so a good job done by all, including the folks here in Town Hall. So it's very important, and I think when people do good work in keeping us safe, it merits mention. I'd like to read a short feature here from the county, and so what happened was, in the last six months of 2017, there's been $150,000 distributed to municipalities throughout the county for recycling. Lacy, although we're not fifth in our size, we were fifth in that income, so we garnered over $7,000 of that income. So, you know, when we recycle, it's lands that are saved, it's landfills that aren't filled, and it's money into our coffers. So I'd urge our town folk to continue doing that, it's low-hanging fruit, it's something that we could all do, with just an extra bin right in our kitchen. I'd like to end, if there's anybody looking for work, we have a community job fair, May 17th, 4:00 in the afternoon till 7:00 in the evening, it's gonna be at 175 Sunset Avenue. All of the health departments for Ocean County's divisions will have representatives present there to answer questions, everything from finance to nursing to environmental. Public's invited to learn more about the services offered, as residents of Lacy Township, these are your services as well. And, you know, charity starts at home, and I want our people here in Lacy to know about this. So all those services will be there, job seekers are encouraged to inquire, so there's telephone numbers here, 732-341-9700. Again, it's May 17th, come with your resume in hand, it's May 17th, 2018, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. And that's all I have this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Just to give some ideas, some people have been asking, there's some projects going on in town, as we all know, Taco Bell, it's coming along, I think it was supposed to be done in March.
It's opening June 8.
June 8.
June 9, I think.
June 8, okay. So that's a great thing. Dunkin' Donuts on Lacy Road?
No opening day yet.
Nothing yet. Then, the final thing that I really wanted to on the projects is the new road.
June 1st is the anticipated opening date of that, and I just touched base with the engineer yesterday morning, and we're still on target for that date.
Great.
Unfortunately, Staples will be leaving in June.
Yes, the general manager I got to speak to, he said June 8 is their last day. It's unfortunate, the demographics weren't done well for them, I guess.
It's the internet.
As I was gonna say, it's all the online.
Yeah, it's online. Online, you know, and I'm still the greenhorn on that, I call it a greenhorn, but I am. I don't do that online stuff, I don't order anything online, I believe in shopping local and going there and purchasing the product, that's what I believe in, and I always will do that. Let's see what else. Doggie Derby, as I mentioned, June 3rd, great thing, Stephen will be bringing the dog, the Outtakes on it, to the Doggie Derby.
If he can slag himself away from that movie.
Yeah. Senior Lunch is May 25th, we look forward to that, always. I add, George Resatar, which is also, he's a police officer in town, but also the president of Lacy Little League, I just, I'm gonna keep reminding people, you know, July is coming. The Lacy Little League program is thrilled to have been selected as the host site for the New Jersey Little League Intermediate Regional World Series at Coon Park. The event is scheduled to take place from Wednesday, July 11th through Sunday, July 15th. It's gonna bring a lot of impact, it's probably gonna bring about 500 to 700 people to town, which is a good thing for the kids playing, because they're gonna be able to have a lot of people down there. The businesses in town are gonna, you know, definitely benefit from that, which is no doubt a good thing. So I will keep on repeating it as we go, so we do wanna have, you know, a lot of people come and pass the word around. Doggie Derby seemed like, everybody, Memorial Day Parade that was mentioned, please come out, we wanna have a good showing to support our veterans. Last year, we had a good show, but this year, I'd like to see it packed out here, where we can't find a parking spot, because they deserve it. Other than that, have you noticed some of us are dressed in pink?
I didn't get the word.
Nope, that's right, I got it the last minute, but for, you know, paint the town pink for cancer awareness, so please, everybody, in any fashion you can for the cancer, support them in any function that we can, financially, volunteerism, anything you can do for them, it's, no doubt, they need all the help they can get to make it, someday we hope that cancer will go away. As it, and I did survive calling cancer, so I know it's been a, it's a, it can be done, it's just, it's a lot of money out there, and we need to help them out. That's all I have.
Mayor, may I have one additional comment?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, I did forget one thing. Our deputy mayor brought up senior scams, it's important to know that our police chief and our lieutenants actually have a video and a presentation to show that they have shooed, I've seen it, and it took place in Pheasant Run. Actually, it's so comprehensive, it should probably be shown to other folks as well,